Good evening. With eight of nine board members present, we're going to call the meeting to order. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Dethridge.
Face the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder that this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, so be sure to express your gratitude for all of our amazing teachers. Also, next week, on Tuesday, May 15th, we will begin our high school graduation ceremonies with the majority of them being held at Thompson Bowling Arena. A detailed schedule is on the KCS website, but I wanted to be sure and mention one more time for our families of the arena's clear bag policy that will be in effect for all graduations, which will allow individuals to carry a clear bag no larger than 12 by 6 by 12, or a one gallon clear plastic storage bag, or a small clutch purse no larger than 4.5 by 6.5. So, thank you in advance for adhering to this policy. If you are an elected official, please stand. Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't leave anybody out. I see Councilwoman Stephanie Welch coming in. Welcome, Stephanie. So, changes to the agenda. Just a reminder that you received via email today a newly revised version of Policy B-171, Complaints and Appeals to the Board, as recommended by the Law Department, which changed the word "must" in lines nine and 17 to the word "should." That new version is also attached to your agenda for your consideration. One change that I would like to ask for to the agenda would be listed as Item 12H, which is a discussion and possible action on the percentage that high school end-of-course exams will count in a student's final grade for the 2017-2018 school year. Are there other changes to the agenda? Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the Policy 191 to the next Policy Committee meeting.
Okay. Other changes?
Madam Chair, just one question. Did you say that 9B with regards to T cap scores integration, has that been determined? If not, I would like to remove that to Policy Review.
Okay. No, we have not. Okay. Removal of 9B and C. Other changes? Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on Mr. Norman's request. I know this policy has been back and forth several times to Policy Review. And I know Ms. Cotney was trying to get everyone's schedule to get that meeting on the agenda. I would just urge the administration and my colleagues to, let's try and have some forward momentum for this if we can maybe get the policy through that two approval process before school starts again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other changes before we vote? Okay, do I have a motion to approve these changes to the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we'll now turn to Superintendent Thomas for some special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board would like to combine Items 5 and 6, I guess, on the special recognition. And as you know, the special recognition of our Bearden and Farragut High School dance teams was postponed from the April 11 board meeting due to some last-minute conflicts. So, the teams appear on the agenda tonight. Unfortunately, and as you may suspect, the amazingly talented students are in high demand. I think the Farragut team had an engagement this evening, and some of the members of the Bearden team also had an engagement. So, we don't have the full teams here, but I think we do have representatives from Bearden team. So, we're glad to have you with us, those that could make it. Let me just talk a little bit about the accomplishments of both the Bearden and Farragut teams. For the fifth straight year, the Bearden High School Dance Team won the TSSAA Large Varsity Jazz Title at the state competition held in Murfreesboro. In February this year, with over 80 dance teams competing in the UDA Dance Nationals in Orlando, Florida, Bearden's team came home from the competition with a national title in the Large Varsity Palm category, as well as taking fourth in the nation in the Large Varsity Jazz. Congratulations to head coach Hannah Keithley, assistant coach Catherine Brassfield, choreographer Katie Fear Lane, Bearden High School sponsor Rebecca Nutter, and their team. The Farragut High School Dance Team also left the competition in February with a national title in the Small Varsity Jazz Division and finished second in the Palm Division. This was Farragut's first-ever title. They came close to a title in 2017, placing in the top five nationally in both Palm and Jazz, but I'm sure they're extremely excited to achieve this national recognition for 2018. Congratulations to head coach Adanya Adams, Farragut High School sponsor Tracy Moore, and their team. And Knox County is extremely proud and honored to recognize these talented groups of students. We will make sure their certificates of achievement are delivered to them through their principals, Dr. John Bartlett and Ryan Seabee, who are with us this evening. So, if we could take a minute for the member of the Farragut team to come up to the stage, I'd like to have a picture with you and Dr. Bartlett.
Dr. Davis, do you want to come up? And Joe Snyder, yeah, I think we do. Come on. Snyder here too. Yeah, okay. I think we need a father-daughter picture, definitely. I love special recognitions, and we also have several of our student scholars from multiple high schools are joining us this evening. So, we just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and applaud their amazing academic accomplishments. If I can ask Bearden High School Principal John Bartlett, he's already making his way up here, to share his student information first, and then ask Farragut High School Principal Ryan Seabee, Hardin Valley Academy School Counselor Ashley Baylor, and West High School Counselor Sarah Bass to follow them in order.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Thomas, thank you for giving this time to recognize our student scholars. Unfortunately, none of our students could be here this evening due to schedule conflicts, but I'm proud to accept their certificates and recognize the following students. Tyler Chan, who will be attending the University of Alabama Huntsville. Priscilla Cho, who will be attending Emory University in Atlanta. Austin Gardner, who will be attending Virginia Tech. And James McIntyre, who will be attending Duke. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. We do have one student who was able to make it tonight. I think the schedule conflicts, particularly this spring, are abundant. And I know a lot of my students, I saw them today, they wanted me to apologize on their behalf, so they're sorry for that. But at this time, I would ask that Benjamin Chinault, please come forward. Benjamin Chinault is a U.S. Presidential Scholarship nominee, and as president of the Biology Olympiad is, of course, a Biology Olympiad International semifinalist. He scored a perfect score of 36 on the ACT. Ben finished third in the state in the Brain B, and is nearing completion of his Eagle Scout ranking. He is also a member of the National Spanish Honor Society, and is planning to attend the University of Utah with an intended major of Biomedical Engineering and Pre-Med. Benjamin Chinault. I do have a few other nominees. Ms. Cotney, I just want to clarify, these are National Merit only, or were the U.S. Presidential and perfect ACT as well?
Yeah, there's other, there's some perfect ACT scores in there.
Okay, because I have a whole list here. I just want to make sure I'm not out of order. Farragut High School did have several other students who could not be here tonight. Like I said, for National Merit Scholar Finalists, Caleb Bradley, Kevin Chen, Roger Chen, Daniel Chu, Harrison Crawford, Anna Delahunt, Catherine Delahunt, Alexander Galindo, Michelle Hee, Michael Lynn, Rachel Margulies, Anna Ostrom, Kevin Sun, Aiden Thomason, and Eric Wong. For National Hispanic Scholar, Alexander Galindo. Those students receiving perfect ACT scores are seniors Caleb Bradley, again Benjamin Chinault, Catherine Delahunt, Michael Lynn, Aiden Thomason, and Eric Wong. Juniors with perfect ACT scores are Elliot Fang and Shewaway Jessie Lee and Daniel Zetterberg. Finally, Farragut High School had five students for U.S. Presidential Scholar candidates. Again Benjamin Chinault, Catherine Delahunt, Michael Lynn, Eric Wong, and Aiden Thomason. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm representing Hardin Valley Academy. Mrs. Reynolds has asked me to do this. We have three students that we would like to recognize. One was supposed to be here, but I do not see him. Thomas Banker is a 2018 National Merit Scholarship finalist. He will be attending the Ohio State University, and he will major in Chemical Engineering. He is also a four-year member of the Varsity Cross Country Team and Track Team. Another National Merit is Ryan Hart. He's graduating with a 4.533 GPA. He is also a National AP Scholar, and that is having an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. He plans to enroll at Northeastern and major in Public Policy, Business, and Physics. He also earned a perfect score on the ACT. And lastly, Austin Garcia is our National Hispanic Recognition Program finalist. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Bass, and I'm the International Baccalaureate Counselor at West High School. Thank you for recognizing our students this evening. I'd like to ask Leo Beal first to come up. Leo is a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. His average AP exam score is 4.5, and he has been awarded scholarships for the University of Tennessee, Knoxville, totaling $13,000 per year. With an ACT score of 34, an SAT score of 1540, Leo has been accepted into the Cook Grand Challenge Honors Program at UT, and he will also be in the College of Engineering. I'd like to ask Blair Johnson to come forward. Blair is an International Baccalaureate Diploma candidate, a National Merit Scholarship finalist, and an AP Scholar with honor. Blair attended the Governor's School for Computational Physics. With a perfect 36 ACT score, he is also a U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program candidate, and was awarded the President's Award for Outstanding Academic Excellence. Blair will be attending Georgia Tech as a prestigious stamp scholar. And finally, Will Yates. Will is an International Baccalaureate Diploma candidate, National Merit finalist, and AP Scholar with distinction. He's a member of the National Honor Society and president of Mu Alpha Theta. William also received Best of West awards in French, Chemistry, and AP US History, and has plans to major in Electrical Engineering at Auburn University. I don't know if you noticed a theme or not, but all three of these gentlemen are future engineers. We have four additional National Merit semifinalists who are unable to attend tonight. Catherine Diamond, an IB Diploma candidate, who will be attending University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Benjamin Gibbons, an International Baccalaureate Diploma candidate, who will be attending Emory University. Hadley Peavyhouse, International Baccalaureate Diploma candidate, who will be attending the University of Memphis. And Yuki Tomcovic, an International Baccalaureate Certificate student, who will be attending University of California at Berkeley. Thank you for having us.
Yes. Would like to announce that if you would like to leave, you feel free to do so at this time. You don't have to stay for the rest of the business meeting. But congratulations, what accomplishments. We're really proud of you guys. Now, Ms. Cotney.
Item 8, Consent Agenda.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Dethridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-171, Complaints and Appeals to the Board as amended.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Oh, okay, we've got two versions on there. Okay. So, do you want to clarify?
There are two versions of this policy attached to your agenda, and the one that the Law Department recommended, those changes in lines nine and 17 are the second versions. Just wanted to make sure we were voting on that version and not the one from Monday's work session.
Okay. Ms. Dethridge?
Yes, thank you. I do agree, even though, and I agree with the recommendations by Attorney Doppler, I just want to make sure that we understand that even though it says they should, if someone decides they want to go straight to the board or straight to the alums busman, that they would at least have, make sure that they have gone through the proper procedures. Because when you say should, they may feel like they don't have to go to the principal first and all that. But I just want to make sure that we understand that they need to at least make sure, if they do jump to number three or four, that they may at least ask them if they've done the proper thing. So, that way they'll know that they've covered all the bases. Some people don't understand, won't get confused about. That does not mean you don't have to follow procedure.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Mr. Doppler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for those comments, Ms. Dethridge. The recommendation of the Law Department for the word "must" is, or "should" versus "must," is to make the policy uniform. I mean, if the board would like to make the policy read "must" all the way through, then that's a possibility as well versus "should." I would just caution the board that if you go with "must," then that would not necessarily allow for that unique extraordinary situation where someone would need to go straight to the superintendent or something such as that. So.
Ms. Fugge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that "should" is better language than "must." I just think that we need to make sure that folks really, at the school level, really try to solve things as best they can, or the system can't handle everybody if they jump straight over the building level. So.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Roundtree and seconded by Mr. Norman. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
9B and 9C were preferred to Policy Review. 10A, approved local consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for Federal Title I, Title II-A, and Title III funding for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $16,585,329.10.
Same move.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Hill?
Thank you for getting the information to us from Monday's meeting, Mr. Thomas, Dr. Ryswick, whoever was responsible for that. I did have a question about a couple of the items on the attachment. I'm referring to the to the one where I had asked about the 4% reduction in Title I, and there was not the clearest of answers. Attachment A, I just want to be sure I'm reading this correctly. I understand that the numbers that are in parentheses are the numbers that are actually reduced for this coming school year. So, Adrian Burnett would be losing $75,000. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. These questions I'm going to ask you all. I'm not picking on any school, I promise you, because my school's listed here too. But, for example, in Adrian Burnett, I noticed that they are losing a teacher, but that teacher was moved over to our general purpose fund. Now, was that position noted in the printout that we got back in early spring as far as positions added or taken away from a school?
Dr. Ryswick, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hill. So, what happened in a lot of, when you see those position changes moved? So, for example, in Adrian Burnett, Ms. Wolfenbarger would have had another opening that came open that was in her staff allotment for a position that was already accounted for in general purpose. So, that is not a new position that rolled over into general purpose. That's just, and that'll happen sometimes. If teachers have been funded through Title I, and then maybe someone leaves or attrition happens, and they've been an effective teacher, they'll roll them into a general purpose position. So, it's not a new one.
Okay. Great, great. The, like Austin East, it looks like they lost almost $5,000. And it says repurposed technician and coaching position into teaching positions, added two additional teaching positions. How do you do that when you've lost $5,000 in funding?
Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Yeah, there's so many nuances to it, but I'll try to, I'll take a stab at it.
All right, thank you. Because this was directed specifically at Title I.
Correct. So, in Title I, what happens, and Ms. Martin can come up with other information if we need that too, there are basically, an allocation's given to a school, and there are three, it's actually four pots. There's a requirement for family engagement, which is typically not considered in theirs. And then they have an equipment category, they have a personnel category, and they have a professional development category. How How schools decide to move that and what amounts they decide to put of that full allocation into those amount is up to the school and up to the needs that they have at the school. So what we see lots of times in positions, if there's a reduction made, is we'll see a, those are year-to-year positions. And so what we'll see happen is a administrative team or leadership staff will decide that they may put less money in their equipment in one year, or less money in their professional development if they take a cut in order to keep positions that they have. Or they may find that a position they had for one given year was not as effective as they wanted to, and I think that's the case when you look at some of these, and they may trade a teacher position in for two educational assistants, or an instructional coach in for an educational assistant and a teacher. So they rework that every year based on their needs. So even if they took a reduction, they may have not put as much into one of the two categories or decided they wanted to go about differently on how they use those title dollars.
All right, so for example, on AE added two teaching positions, then that money would have come out of other Title I money that was already allotted to that school. Is that correct?
Correct. And I think Ms. Martin probably knows specifically, you know, if it came out of equipment or professional development, but that's typically the case.
So that, that's like $120,000 or $110,000? So what, what did AE lose when they hired those two positions instead?
Madam Chair, too, I think the allocation's still five, about $556,000, even though they lost $5,000. Is that correct, John? So again, there were still sufficient funds to do, to do what they had asked to do. That may not answer your question, Ms. Hill.
Well, and I understand that, I'm just wondering if they had this pot, they had this pot of money, and in the end, they are adding two teaching positions, basically with the same pot of money, correct?
Correct.
So what, what got taken away?
If I could ask Ms. Martin, she'll, she'll know the details of that specific for that school better, if I could call her to the podium.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Hill, what Austin East is cutting out of there, what they're repurposing their funds for this year is they've reduced their equipment and their professional development. So the current year we're in, they had, they had spent more money this year for equipment. So next year, they have reduced their equipment line item.
So they had an equipment line item and a professional development line item that was 100,000, that together was $100,000 last year?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. So when you look at Austin East, it said they repurposed a technician position and a coaching position. So when they repurposed the technician position, they repurposed that into one of the new teaching positions.
Right.
Yes.
It says repurpose technician and coaching position into two teaching positions. I get that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of a.
And, yes, ma'am.
And then they added two additional positions.
And then they added two additional positions. So they cut way back on their equipment.
Okay.
Line item, and they cut back on professional development. They also had, they usually put money in tutoring because they like to have enough in tutoring for, during the school year, and then for, to do a summer school program. So they were very intentional about exactly how much they were spending this year in tutoring to make that line item a little closer to what the actual expenditure would be. So there was a little money there, too.
That they took out of tutoring?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And not to impact the program at all. It was just that they would be able to do the same thing with just a little bit less money.
Okay. So then the, the same would be said, say, at Northwest Middle School. I mean, they lost 31,000. That's, they repurposed an EA position.
Yes, ma'am. He actually, the, the person who was in the position actually was resigning the position. He's going somewhere else. And so knowing that that position was going to be empty, they decided that they were going to repurpose it.
And they added a coach. Okay. Can you see my confusion here when I'm looking at these reductions that all these schools had? And yet, when I'm reading about what happened and there's added personnel, I just, I'm just trying to be real clear. And also, when you, after you add that, I understand within, I understand that Title I has guidelines about how money is spent, I understand that. But within those guidelines, I would like a real clear definition about how much each school actually has to say about how that money is spent.
So each school with, working in conjunction with their school leadership team, which consists of instructional staff, administrative staff at the school, teachers, parents, students many times, and community members, they sit down every year and they talk about their allocation, you know, if it's changed, you know, how the money was spent the current year, and how the money being spent that year, how it directly impacted student achievement in their school. And so from there, in conjunction with developing their school plan and their needs assessment, what they're supposed to do is they're supposed to prioritize their top three to five needs that directly impact how the students are going to be able to perform, what the students are going to need. So all of the funding that is sent to the school, how it's allocated is, is at the school level. It is, it's, and Austin East has had probably three meetings so far this spring about what this budget's going to look like with teachers and parents and students involved in the process.
So when they send it to you, as long as it is within the parameters of what, what Title I requires, then, then you just approve it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my other question about Ms. Cottney, can you read the one before about how it's allotted? I'd asked one before that on a.
Oh, are you looking at your, are you looking at your email, Ms.?
Well, it went, it really just went back again to the, how you see it's something being cut so much, and then you see positions being added, and just making sure that from year to years, we struggle with our budget, you know, that, I appreciate the explanation that these positions added were vacant positions already in our general purpose fund. And that's, that's what I needed clarification on.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the confusion comes from a serious lack of clarity that we have in our staffing formula lists that we get. When we're repurposing positions without showing the losses and the gains, we aren't getting a realistic picture of what's actually going on. So I'd like to request that we get a true staffing list by school and funding source that shows exactly what staff is there for the coming year and for the previous year, so that we can see those losses and gains, and that we can see where those positions are being repurposed. Because when a position is repurposed, there is still a loss of a position. So we're looking at, at losses that we're not necessarily seeing when we're looking at that staffing formula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Ms. DeThridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my, having to sit down and talk to the principal about this, I understand what has happened. And that is, when they get the money and they allocate it a certain way of certain year, and then they get cut, they sit down and decide, do I need this piece of equipment? Or do I need the staff development? Or do I need this? Or do I need more teachers? And if you have vacancy, or if you have opportunity to add what you need, then that's what they do with their money. And whether they repurpose and they add, as long as it's in their budget and it's in, because we as a Board have already said, you can't add without our permission. But you can do whatever you want to do within the money and within the allotted amount of employees or that you have. So now we're going to go back and ask them to tell us how they repurpose. After we told them, they can do it with, as long as they don't add. So I, I don't really agree that we have to have a number of how many come in and come out, as long as the, inside the school, we give them a certain amount of money, they have a plan, they bring it to the central office and their supervisor, they go through it, they explain what they do and why they do, then I think as long as it's not adding, and it's not, and, and they are doing what they think is best within the school. And the reason I say that is because I had the same concerns on why, but they explained why, and it's because that's what they needed for their students. So whether they, if they decide to take their money and add two teachers versus buying equipment or professional development, then that's what they ought to do. So I'm kind of confused on why we're confused about how they repurpose their money. As long as they don't, as long as they stay within the allotted amount of money and they have talked to the super, their supervisor, then I guess I'm concerned or confused about what is your confusion.
Ms. Hill?
Yes, I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. DeThridge, and it, what it came down to was this summary that we got, which showed how our schools lost, some of them several thousands of dollars. Yet, under the listing, it showed added positions.
Correct.
So.
And also showed where it was repurposed, and also said they lost equipment, and also said they did not do professional development.
Right, but, but all of them, all of them didn't say that. If you look, if you look at the list for schools, some of them, like one school lost $4,000, and underneath it, it added a position.
Right.
So I'm just trying to get that clear, you know, in my mind, not stating anybody's doing anything wrong at all, but just trying to understand. Because, you know, the, the impact when we add positions is certainly financial with benefits and all, but when we take away positions, as Ms. Owen said, it is a lost position. Something is going away that was not there before.
Because of the lack of funding.
Right, exactly.
And then they have to take what they have and repurpose it.
I, I got that.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other lights, I believe the motion was made by Ms. Roundtree and seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten B, approve consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for Special Education Services in the amount of $13,193,560 IDEA Part B, and for preschool special education services in the amount of $305,572 IDEA preschool for fiscal year 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this, Ms. Owen?
Are any of these new positions?
Who can answer that? Dr. Reiswick? Ms. Massey?
There are not any new positions in the federal IDA budget. There are a couple of repurposed positions from, from a related arts area to a classroom teacher because we have a need in preschool.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other lights, so with the motion on the floor by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten C, approve receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for a federal child for A student support and academic enrichment grant for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $404,657.73.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Owen?
I have the same question. Are any of these new positions?
Ms. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only new position in there is the Augmentative Communication Specialist, who will be working with our students who have more significant communication disorders and lack of voice. We, we've placed a position in there to address that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item ten D, approve application and award of a Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for the Knox County Schools Career and Technical Education Program in the amount of $822,843.86 for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? What, Ms. Owen? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten E, approve grant contract with the State of Tennessee. Now I just read, D is Carl D. Perkins. Item ten E, approve grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Human Services for a transition school to work grant and receipt of funds in the amount of $24,157.80 with required matching funds of $6,503.95 for July 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2018, in the amount of $96,523.19 with required matching funds of $26,123.81 for October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Ms. Owen?
Are these required matching funds already budgeted? And if not, how will they be covered?
Dr., Ms. Massey? There you are.
Here I am. Yes, they are budgeted, primarily in the general purpose funds, but they're, and they're a required match. These are all services that if, if we did not accept this grant, we would still have to provide for students with disabilities. It's just that this grant pays for the majority of those transition services, which includes a vocational rehabilitation counselor that works exclusively with Knox County Schools, and then several time card positions that are job coaches, that if you maybe are out in the community and see some of our students who have more significant disabilities on a job where someone is helping them learn that job, that's part of what this grant pays for. And again, would be required by us if we did not accept the grant.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item ten F, approve memorandum of understanding with great schools partnership for opioid misuse prevention for students and teachers funded by Cardinal Health Foundation Grant in the amount of $35,500 for the 2018, 2019 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten G, approve application and receipt of funds from a Knott's Bar Foundation Grant in the amount of $1,500 for Dogwood Elementary School designated to a fourth and fifth grade ambassador's field trip.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugge. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten H, approve application and receipt of funds from a URS CH2M Oak Ridge LLC U-Cor Education Grant in the amount of $1,000 for Dogwood Elementary School designated to purchase Osmo stations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugge. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten I, approve application and receipt of grant funds from the Crystal Foundation in the amount of $2,390.41 for Pond Gap Elementary School designated to the After School Cooking Club.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fugge, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten J, approve application and receipt of funds from a Tanger Kids Grant in the amount of $2,500 for Powell High School designated to ELL Civic and Community Engagement.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms., was that Ms. DeThridge? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Ten K, approve sub recipient information and commitment form with the University of Tennessee authorizing a joint grant application with South Door Middle School for the proposal titled Growing Healthy Communities Through Constructive Education.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item ten L, approve application and receipt of funds from a Tanger Kids Grant in the amount of $1,435 for Spring Hill Elementary School designated to the Request It/Read It Initiative.
Second.
Motion by Ms. DeThridge, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item TNN, approve application and receipt of funds in the amount of $25,000 from Oak Ridge Associated Universities for a 2018 Extreme Classroom Makeover Contest Grant designated for technology at Westview Elementary School.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
11A, approve amendments to agreements with after-school care service providers, Kids Place Incorporated, Kent Top Incorporated, Shades of Development, School Care Incorporated, and YMCA of East Tennessee for extension of provision of services during summer break 2018, which may extend through July 31st, 2018.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
12A, approve fiscal year 2018 budget line item transfers for the General Purpose Fund in the amount of $138,187.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
12B, approve addendum to Knox County Schools Adoption of Textbooks for Science to Include Geology.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
12C, discussion and approval of relocating the Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy to Lincoln Park Technology Trade Center.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion on this item, Ms. Fugit?
Yes, I, I just want to know what the motion was. This says discussion and possible action, so is the motion that we accept the, the, um, the proposal. I'm just trying to make sure it's worded.
Mr. Depler.
I agree with Ms. Fugit. I mean, I mean, there needs to be a, uh, a motion to approve and, and state it as such.
Will you restate your motion, Mr. Norman?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Fugit.
No, Gloria did it.
Ms. Deathridge, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
12D, approve Tennessee Department of Education School and Program Approval Form authorizing the renaming of Sammy Hill Family Community Center to Sammy Hill Primary School.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
12E, approve amendment to memorandum of understanding with Knox County regarding workers' compensation.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
12F, approve memorandum of agreement with Project Grad Knoxville for the term July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023, subject to annual evaluation.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
12G, discussion and possible action on superintendent's evaluation model.
Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I make a motion that we use the, um, the evaluation rubric that we, that was adopted in 2015. But we exclude indicator 1.2.4 because there was no data provided by the, um, the, the department saying they could cover that. Exclude indicator 1.3.2 and indicator 1, well, no. I thought it 1.4.4. And that's just my motion, that we do that and exclude those. And then it's, at least we have a motion on the floor if somebody would second it, and then we can discuss.
Okay, Mr. Motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Discussion on that. We did get a lot of information today, which I found very useful. And thank you to our RE18 and whoever else provided that, so.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I just ask a question? What, can you tell me exactly what you just said? So I can understand what you did.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate you seconded it so we can talk about it. Um, what I basically said is that we use the existing evaluation rubric. But we exclude the items that our research department said they could not give us any data for. And those items were 1.2.4. One, oh wait, 1 point, hang on. Okay, 1.31, point 1, I messed up before. 1.3.3, I got confused what my check marks meant. And then I believe it was 1.4.4. And so, um, Ms. Deathridge, if you would accept my amended motion to correct those items, then we can leave that for discussion. Yeah, I, I made a mistake in my check marks, thank you.
Okay, do we need to vote on your amended motion?
She accepted it.
Okay, she accepted it, so we're okay. So, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thanks to REA for getting us, for us very quickly. Um, and I appreciate Ms. Fugit's motion and suggestion. My only concern is regarding, um, if you look at Attachment D, which REA sent us, um, those, those indicator items that are tied directly to TN Ready data, um, particularly, if you look at the 15, 16 year, you see there are blocks where it's NA and then, um, you know, just the numerous issues that we've had with the TN Ready implementation and the data. I have concerns about using, while we do have that data, I have grave concerns about the reliability and validity of that data, and I would not be willing to use that for the superintendent's evaluation.
May I ask a question, Ms. Roundtree? So which items would that not, uh, the reason I ask is...
I'm trying to look at this little tiny, um...
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I started with the ones that we didn't have any data on, because I thought we might want to reduce.
So the ones that I was looking at, um, I don't think, we don't have that chart here. Okay, so the ones that are tied to TN Ready are 1.12, 1.13, 1.14, 1.15.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Fugit, did you wish to speak to that?
No, I just wanted to know which ones. So you would like us to eliminate that whole group too? Are you making an amendment to my?
I'm willing to make an amendment. I just wanted to put it out there for, for discussion. And then, um, I mean, because for 1.1.1, um, REA was able to look at, we have the, um, STAR and Ames Web data. So we do have something that's, has slightly more validity than anything the Department of Ed has been in charge of.
Okay, uh, Ms. Owen?
Um, if, if we are looking at, um, TN Ready scores, that would also impact 1.2.2 and 1.2.3 because those have to do with T-VAS scores.
To, okay. So, so my, so my question, if I, if I may, Madam Chair, is, is, um, I know we had talked about Section 1. You had mentioned perhaps not doing it at all. My only, my only thought about that is if we have data, should we somehow put it in this document and then maybe we choose not to use? I'm just asking because...
Well, I had, and I won't make this in the form of an amendment yet, but my motion would have been to approve the current model for the superintendent's evaluation for this year, using the scoring only from Section 2 and including the information from Section 1 that we were provided as a baseline for future evaluations. Would be kind of where I was going with that. Now, that's not a formal amendment to your motion, but, and we can have other discussion on that if...
Well, I, I'm amenable to changing my motion. I just wanted to get the conversation started.
Which we very much needed, given the amount of time and given that it needs to be done tonight, so, uh, Ms. Horn.
So I can withdraw my motion if you are okay with that, Ms. Deathridge, and you can make your motion.
Do we want to hear from Ms. Horn and Ms. Deathridge?
Yeah, we can, but I'm just saying.
And then hold that thought, and I'll come back to you, Ms. Fugit.
I'm feeling nice, I'll do that.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be in, in favor of Ms. Bounds' motion, also because when Superintendent, Superintendent Thomas took office last, um, last year, he really wouldn't have been responsible for those two 15, 16 scores anyway. So I think there are, there are multiple reasons not to look at Part 1 as part of the evaluation, although I do agree that it would be nice to have the baseline there.
Okay, uh, Ms. Deathridge?
So are we saying we're going to just disregard Section 1 altogether? Is that the motion? What did you say?
Well, that's not a formal motion. That was kind of a discussion about using those only as baselines, but not for actually scoring the superintendent. His scoring would be done only on Section 2, including the narratives that were written as well. And just using one as a baseline, since things are so messed up with the testing. And as Ms. Horn said, really, he came on the job in, I guess, April of 2017. So most of the work was not reflective of his, you know, his initiatives, so. Did you have follow-up, Ms. Deathridge?
Well, I do, kind of, sorta.
Okay.
Is, is high school on TN Ready or is, is EOC, is that TN Ready as well?
I'm sorry, are you asking me, Dr. Roswick?
I'm asking somebody. When we do high school tests, is it TN Ready?
Yeah, the, well, the, they're high school end-of-course tests. So I think what, in these metrics, what's kind of laid out by that are the years, I mean, are the, are the grade levels for those. So I see, you see some that are 3.8, some that are 3.5. So I think it depends on, it depends on which metric you're looking at. But they are, they're all part of the, of the assessment system. So, I mean, you might want to designate, based on grade levels, might be the easiest way to do that in any metrics.
Okay, so, uh, then we're not depending on high school TN Ready data in order to say whether they were proficient in graduate literacy? Are we?
Some of those are. Like if you look at 1.14, uh, at least 80% of high school students would be proficient in numeracy, uh, which is doing the Algebra 1 and Algebra 2 score. So like, that would be an example of that.
Of TN, of TN Ready?
And then you've got some other one, correct. And there's some other ones that, like, uh, 1.13, that talks about 75% in students in grades 3 through 8. Uh, so I think, again, it's all kind of thought comprehensively as TN Ready, high school EOCs, and then grades 3.8, uh, 3 through 8 are assessments there. So it's probably better to put the grade levels as they're laid out there.
Okay, so these are, are these the same data points that you use to say kids can't read?
I'm, I'm, um, for the, the previous discussions on previous weeks when we looked at literacy rates and that sort of thing, it was TN, it was the TN Ready, Ready Data. And it was, it was by overall school, uh, grades 3 through 5, which are tested in those elementaries for the priority schools that we were looking at and...
But were they TN Ready data?
Correct, off of last year and...
Okay, so then if they're not good, they're not good, right?
I got, I got a, I was correct from Steve Rutter, so I thought I was, but, but, but if there's specifics to it, I mean, Mr. Rutter's here to, to speak from REA if you, if you want some questions.
Well, no, I'm just saying according to what our discussion's been.
Sure.
That's the same data we're using to say my kids can't read. Not mine, but, or some kids can't read, but then they're not good.
Correct, the previous, the previous, uh, board meeting when there was discussion about literacy rates in our priority schools in particular, it was, it was data from the TN Ready tests in previous years from grades 3 through 5 in those schools.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clear on what we are using to evaluate who.
Okay.
Okay, and the next question I guess I have is, um, what was that? So is the team data different than, can we use team data? Are we, you know, some of this is team data versus T-VAS data versus TN Ready data? So is TN, team data good?
Team data's based on the T-VAS data.
Okay, okay.
Did you want to say something, Dr. Roswick?
Thank you, Ms. Bounds. I, I would say, I mean, uh, Mr. Rutter pulled the data for that, so he could probably speak, I mean, if, it'd be okay if he could come to the podium.
That would be fine, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, team, team data is, T-VAS is used as a portion of the team data. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a relatively small portion compared to the whole pie, but, but it is in there. So, and this is, these are the, team is what we, when you refer to educator level of effectiveness, like, that's what we're talking about when we're talking about team data.
Okay, so can we find out if we double the number of tennis reward school? We can't do that either at this time? Because they haven't even decided what is...
Well, it's unclear. We haven't been told by the, uh, TDOE yet whether, we know that they have to differentiate schools because it's written into ESSA, but we don't know how they're going to do it exactly yet. So, um, and the way they differentiate is they name reward schools and priority schools and focus schools. So we don't know, I don't know what that's going to look like, they haven't told us yet.
Okay, and the same with the ACT, 70% of students will meet college readiness indicator?
Um, we should be able to get ACT.
Okay. I'm just think, I was just asking because I know some of this we probably could get and some of this we can't get. So as far as just disregarding the whole thing, I'd still say that there are some indicators in here we might be able to get some information on and at least use it as far as evaluation. Just disregard the piece that says the cultural excellence, which is part of his priority, and disregard, uh, invest in our people, part of his priority. I think some of that we might need to figure out how we can at least evaluate him. Um, some, how, how well is he moving towards at least the goal? For that year.
Let me...
We don't have to deal with, I mean, he's not responsible for 15, 16, and 17, but those are gauges that we use to know where we are and to figure out where we are now.
Okay.
And that would be with any superintendent.
Right, okay. Well, let me go ahead and let some of these other ones speak to that, and I'll come back. Um, so, Ms., I believe you were next, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you.
Well, you might have been, but I was going to let her speak and...
I'm just saying, let anybody else go.
Oh, I just wanted to, just a couple points of clarification to some of Ms. Deathridge's comments. So, um, in my mind, Ms. Deathridge, the entire concern around any of the assessments, um, that QuayStar has been in charge of, you know, managing and rolling out. Um, there's concern about reliability and validity of those assessments. So, under the, QuayStar, the testing company that...
Oh, QuayStar.
Yeah, has managed all that. So, when I'm, when I went through that checklist earlier, pretty much anything their hands have touched, I would be, especially after this year, I would be leery of just using that as, as an assessment. And then just to the second point, um, as Dr. Roswick said, I think some of the information in talking about literacy was looking at TN Ready, but I know also information that the board was provided was longitudinal data over literacy assessments, so pre-TN Ready, so years of longitudinal assessments. And then also Ames Web data from the schools as well, which is the benchmark data.
But then that's what we should use for this. You can't, to me, you can't use one for one thing and one for the other.
But the superintendent, I mean, we can't use old TCAP data to evaluate him.
You can compare it as a benchmark. I'm just asking, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just...
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just explaining what I, the information I was using, which is Ames Web, which is, as I mentioned earlier, for 1.1.1, REA has pulled that. And I think Ames Web is a reliable indicator.
Okay, and I believe Ms. Hill has her light on, Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are the EOCs that are, uh, written, are those done by department?
They're, they're, they're written by the State of Tennessee, and it's by subject area for high schools.
So the EOCs are consistent?
Across the State of Tennessee, yes, yeah.
In the four subj, right, in the four subject areas. Um, wondering if there would be any value in, in perhaps using that as a, um, a, a baseline benchmark? EOC scores. And then the second part of that would be also as a benchmark, ACT scores. Those two are outside of the TN Ready or in T-VAS arena.
Okay. My, my thoughts on that is that we could include some of... My, my thoughts on that is that we could include some of those, as Ms. Dethridge was saying. I just don't feel like, under this Part One of the strategic goals, based on the five-year strategic plan, we've eliminated so many sections that I don't feel like there is enough sections to draw a composite score from, so...
And I agree with that. Again, I'm merely talking about a baseline.
I do think we need baselines.
Yes, strictly a baseline.
And base it on 2017 only, and that would be in my motion to include it, these as baselines going forward. And then hopefully reconvene a new committee to redo and revise this, based on Ms. Fugit's work of a new strategic plan, so that we have something in place for next year. And, you know, this isn't the board's fault. I mean, this, there's a lot of problems with this, and it's been several years, and it's outdated, and anyway, so, okay. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, question, your motion, would you eliminate Part One altogether, or, or are there certain things that you want in there? You said, but I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't catch it.
Yeah, I'm willing to, I would eliminate it for scoring purposes. We could include information for information only as a, going forward next year. And then when the committee takes it up, they could keep what they felt like was part of Ms., well, not Ms. Fugit's, but the board's strategic plan they vote on. So it could be changed, even after this. We just would want some baseline numbers in there to use for the next committee.
But just for this year, for evaluating Mr. Thomas, we eliminate all of one?
Yes.
I would agree with that. Just to comment along those lines, since we were talking about ACT, one of the problems with ACT is that Knox County requires everybody to take it in order to graduate. And, you know, some people try their best, others, if they, you know, know they're not going to college, know that all they have to do is meet the requirement of taking the test, just go through and just mark something, don't even read the questions. And that gives you a, you know, a false reading, as long as we continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. One, I think this is why the previous board really used a narrative, because what you get to every time you have data is that certain data can be called into question, and, and it changes. And to your point, if we're looking at year-end data from last year, when this superintendent didn't take the job till April, he's not responsible for, for everything that happened last year, so, so I get that. My concern would be that the board really think, I won't be here, but I think the board needs to think really long and hard as it looks at its next evaluation tool. To, I caution it being entirely rubric. That's why I like the, that's why I like, that's why I opposed this when it came a few years ago. So I will withdraw my motion that, I will, I will amend my motion yet again, let me just do that, to say that we will use this rubric and use all available data that we have for a baseline in the Section One, but we will not use it in part of creating the composite score for Section One. So, Ms. Dethridge, you seconded my original motion. If you don't, if you're not okay with that, let me know.
I second it. I second it, but can I make a statement?
This is a, you made the substitute or an amended?
Amended.
Amended motion.
For the second time. My amended, amended motion.
Okay. And you seconded.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion in relation to the amended motion, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to comment, I agree with what Ms. Fugit was saying about there, there needs to be at least some, a part of it needs to be a narrative, and as she's well aware, in the past, it's not always been popular with some people, but I have used the narrative simply because I, I felt that it was a evaluation of the individual. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that, in essence of time, but Dr. Drummond has offered to work with a future committee possibly to develop a superintendent evaluation, and I appreciate your email on that, and we'll take you about it in the future. Okay.
One question, one question, Madam Chair. So, I'm sorry, Tony. I was just gonna ask, what are we using for the baseline as far as data? That's all. When you said we're gonna use this as baseline, are we gonna use what data as baseline? I guess I'm questioning, I'm sorry.
What I meant was the baseline data that the department gave us, that was, and then next year, the committee can decide which of that they want to count, 'cause they're going to probably change all of this, but I think we should record what the department gave us. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I particularly would prefer a narrative type of evaluation as to this, but I, my question is, what are we gonna do with this, and when are we gonna do it? I don't, I don't know what the process is.
Well, it has to be done and voted on by, is that correct, Mr. Dupler? Do you want to add anything to June? It has to be done in June. And so I would assume that Superintendent Thomas would do his self-evaluation, and then we would compile our numbers, and then from my understanding, it comes to the board chair, oh, thank you, Ms. Fugit, who compiles it all and then presents it, and we vote on it. And I think in the past, each board member has had a meeting with the superintendent, and I don't think there was ever any question about necessarily the process. It was the actual model. Because, while I don't approve, and that's for the board to decide, but just knowing what teachers have to go through and the rubrics, it's not that we have to evaluate the superintendent like teachers, but at the same time, this gave, this particular thing that Ms. Hill and I worked on gave plenty of space for narrative and comments, but it also was based on statistics and data, and not just somebody writing kind of what they thought they had done well, or possibly how they could improve. I mean, I would love to have had that luxury as a classroom teacher, and you probably would have too, to highlighted your good qualities without any data. So, anyway.
Ms. Bounds, I was just gonna say, Mr. Norman, I agree with that, and I think this is a good compromise. There needs to be some rubric data, but there also needs to be the narrative. Because, because I, I agree, I mean, I use the narrative, I like the narrative, but people picked out the thing, board members could pick out the data that they didn't like and use that, they could pick out the data they did like and use that, so this is a more fair representation, as long as we get to do some narrative.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think that having a combination of both is, is good, and I think as we look at the strategic plan that we'll be doing, I think we need to end that conversation, spend a lot of time, at the same time, planning what that evaluation will, what that's gonna look like, so that we can have a committee that will decide for sure what it is, but I think that in that process of what we agree that our strategic plan ought to be, at the same time, side by side, decide what is going, what portion of that will be included in the evaluation. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more discussion, Mr. Dupler? That's what I thought, okay. So, yes, Ms. Fugit?
Is it easier for me just to withdraw and start over?
We can do this.
He said, "It might have been, I was hoping you would." That is okay.
Okay, so, well, I'm just gonna do it to you. So I withdraw everything. Gloria, get ready. 'Cause I'm, now you have to second this. I withdraw all my former motions and amendments, and propose a new motion, which is that we evaluate the superintendent according to this rubric that we have before us, adopted in 2015. We will not count the data that is available to us for Section One, but it will be displayed in the evaluation, but not used in the composite score for this year's evaluation.
So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Fugit, seconded yet again by Ms. Dethridge, and I think all the discussion has ceased, so we can vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. So we now have an evaluation tool, Superintendent Thomas, I know you're relieved. Okay, we have another item, Ms. Cooney?
Item 12H, discussion and possible action on the percentage that high school end-of-course exams will count in a student's final grade for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Do I have a, Ms...
I'd like to make, make a motion that unless the, unless the final, unless the exam grade will benefit the student's final grade for the 2017, 2018 school year, that the percentage will be zero. If it will benefit the student's grade, the percentage will be 15%.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. She beat me to it. Ms. Fugit?
I, I just have a question. We talk about this a lot, about is it fair if it benefits somebody to use it and not use it otherwise? I'm just, I'm just asking that question, because I've heard students say sometimes that's, that doesn't feel fair, that, you know, I've, I've done my work, it either needs to be what I've done for everybody up to that point, or the, the test needs to count. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but I do know that that's a student concern, that sometimes some kids will get an extra benefit because that final test helps them.
Okay, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree with what Ms. Fugit was saying. I, I think you either, you know, if, if you don't wanna use it, just disregard it. If you do, use it for everybody. And I, I understand and share all the concerns, but I don't think that, you know, it's like the teacher telling the kids the day before the test, "Well, you all, you know, you can go home, if you wanna study, if you do well, we'll give you a good grade, but if you wanna go play ball tonight, or run around, or whatever, don't worry about it, it won't count against you, you'll just have to sit through the test," you know? I, I don't think that's fair, and that's the reason I can't support that.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my, ordinarily, I would certainly agree with you, but I think that the fact that there's been so much interruption, there has not been a testing environment in our schools that has been consistent on any one given day, that is the reason that I am in agreeance with Ms. Roundtree, because if a student has prepared and taken a test in full faith, but then their test doesn't come back, or it's not correct, I don't think they should be penalized for that, when they had no control over it. So I think it's, given the fact that, on any given test day, there was, there was no level of comfort that they would be able to finish their test, or whatever, but, but some of them, and I, I wanna hear what Ms. Coon thinks, because some of them would benefit from including those tests. So that's just my rationale. Ordinarily, I would agree with you 100%.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Ms. Owen, and then I'm coming to you, Ms. Coon, 'cause I know we all are anxious to hear what you have to think. Ms. Owen?
Under normal testing circumstances, I think they should all be treated equally, but these were far from normal testing circumstances. We had students sitting side by side, one could submit their test, one couldn't. We had students sitting side by side, one lost all of the work that they had done, the other didn't. One night at dinner, I asked our waitress how testing was going, and she puddled up with tears, because she had to wait until the next day to find out whether her entire essay had been lost or not. So I, I think we're in very different circumstances than we would normally be, and that needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Dethridge? Hold on, Ms. Coon, I'm coming.
Okay. I just had one question, Madam Chair, and I guess it's to the superintendent. Can you tell me how, do you know, I know we had a lot of problems, and some finished and some didn't finish. What is percent of completion for Knox County, as far as the testing? Can somebody just tell me?
Mr. Rutter, Dr. Riswick, who has, does anybody know? That would be a good question.
I don't think anybody knows at this point. Like, when we get, we might have a better idea once we get the results back, but until then, we, we don't know.
So do we have any schools that finished? I mean, elementary, middle, did anybody?
They all finished. It's just, it's just pockets of trouble in a lot of places.
Well, even with trouble, did they finish the test?
Well, some students couldn't.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
Even the students who had trouble submitting, they could, they retrieved, as far as I know, all of those, right?
Okay, that's my question. You can have problems. I'm just saying, did they finally get it fixed where they could finish?
Right. And, and also, grade three through eight was all on paper, mostly on paper.
Okay, so we could do that. We could use that information.
Yeah.
This is for high schoolers?
Okay.
I'm just asking for...
Ms. Coon?
Yes.
And then we'll come over to Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, this is for high schoolers only, for their EOCs? Okay. So I do agree with the concern. There are two parties in this. The people who believe that they prepared, they did really well on it, and they would like it to count, their effort not to be wasted, and then people who, that were not able to do their best because of certain circumstances. It's difficult for me to say one way or another, simply because I really don't see many student factors weighing into this problem. I feel like this testing issue is mostly the testing base itself that caused all the issues, and so it's difficult for me to either assign responsibility or deny responsibility to the students for these grades, simply because students who did well on it, getting the benefit, would also then put students who didn't get to complete it at all at a disadvantage in a way, because those scores would then have to be, that section still has to be made up in some other way. So the students who took the EOC with the TN ready testing will have the TN ready test as that section in their grade book. However, the students who did not have the TN rest, TN ready testing, will still have an empty section for their EOC, whether the TN ready test counts or not, that they will then have to make up in another form, a different manifestation of that material. And so then the teacher would have to make an alternate EOC in order for it to even benefit, for the TN ready testing to be beneficial to any of them, the, the teacher would have to supplement the other students that it wouldn't be beneficial to with another test, which since we're getting test scores back five days after school, there's no way for them to really do that. And so I would say count, not counting it at all would allow the baseline, and then all the students would be administered a teacher EOC, and then the teacher wouldn't have to make up tests for some students, but not others. Please correct me if that's not how it works, but in my experience, that's how the grade book would work in this situation.
Dr. Riswick, do you wanna speak to that?
I, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So, so basically, what we propose, I talked to both Stanley and IT Department today, is we would, in, in the motion that's on the floor, is if, if the score came back and raised the student's average to Ms. Roundtree's motion, that 15% would, would go in there. If it wasn't, there's a way for them to be able to kinda zero out and not hold that against. So what the student's final score was, if they had an 86.4, went in and scored lower on the EOC... on the EOC, that 86.4 would stand for 100 percent of the score. So there wouldn't be—they wouldn't have to take an additional assessment for that. It would just stand as what they had scored by the teacher throughout the semester minus the—the score. So 100 percent—let me say it this way, 100 percent of the score would be based on what the teacher assigned for the work throughout the semester or throughout the year. If it did benefit them, then 85 percent of that would be the teacher's score, and 15 percent on this recommendation would would go to the end-of-course test.
Thank you. So I really don't think that makes that big of a difference in this area. I'm honestly—I—I think that—I've been in this situation before, and so whenever this happened, the mindset—I'll just let you know what the mindset of the students is at this moment—is honestly, we don't—we don't care whether it counts or not, they've already taken it, it's already done with. If it comes and helped them later on, no one will ever know. Like, we don't even know if it helps us or not. We don't get any of these grades back, especially for seniors who had to take these tests, it doesn't matter anymore. But so I would—I would say, from a student perspective, this is more about just saying, "No, we're not going to count this test because this test is bad," as more of a statement to the testing system itself, rather than trying to find some—trying to make it work with some sort of equity with the test, because it's just honestly ineffective at this point. And so I would say, from a student perspective, and from what I've heard from other students, at this point, either decision would be fine, simply because it will not—there's no way to measure fairness when you're given an unfair test, necessarily. So that's all I have to say about—I'm—I'm still fuzzy on this whole thing. It's—it's very confusing.
You think you are, okay.
Yeah, it's very confusing and just frustrating, I would say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coons. Okay, Ms—several people have turned their light—oh, Ms. Horn's got hers off now, so Ms. Horn does it, Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Owen, nobody wishes to speak except Ms. Fugit.
Yes.
Go, Ms. Fugit.
I—I think part of my issue is that I—I would feel for the student who did their very best, whose data got lost, and they're not going to get the advantage of having it count, as opposed to the student who took the test, got a score, and it helped them. So I am more inclined to say, "Don't count it at all," rather than give someone the—the benefit. I—I understand they've studied for the EOC, that's just my fairness issue, and I'm really not going to die on this hill. I mean, I think we can spend a lot of time about this, and to your point, for a senior, it doesn't matter at all, but I do think for sophomores and juniors, when it gets calculated to their end-of-course grade, it matters in honors, it matters in future valedictorian, all that kind of stuff, what gets—what gra—what your final course grades are.
Okay, unless somebody makes—oh, Ms. Horn?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ryswick, so the EOCs that—that are taken at the very end of the school year, the last—very last of the school year for high school, those—those are the EOCs that were—are those different than the EOCs we're talking about now? Do you understand my question? Does that make sense?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Horn. I think, if I'm understanding correctly, so there are the state end-of-course tests that are taken during that three-week window, that—that to Mr. Rutter's comments earlier, are given the same across the state, and that's majority of the core curriculum classes. And then schools may give during final week for, like, physical education, wellness, those sorts of things that don't have a state end-of-course test. They may give a teacher-generated, and in some cases, we have a county-generated one that's given across the board. Now, teachers may also give a different assignment. If they had a state EOC, there may be a project, there may be a test, but what counts the 15 percent is the end-of-course state test, and then if there's not an end-of-course state test, it can be the teacher or county-generated one. Did that answer your question?
I—I believe so. So it's—it's hard to—so it's ve—really difficult to say, because so many—all the classes are all different, and so—okay. So I guess my question would be, if we decide that the T and Ruddy score is not going to count at all, the teachers can then choose to—the EOC that they give—they can choose to give an EOC at the end of the-end of the semester, that last week of school, but—but they don't—they wouldn't have to?
That—that would kind of be a school-based decision. So, for instance, if—if English 1, that's a state end-of-course test, students have already taken that, that—that would be part of this, what we're talking about today. If a—if a school chose to give another exam, and they may choose to give that, what we would say is that's not 15 percent, that's back in that 85 percent that a teacher can do. And so we may have that happen right now. There may be an English 1 teacher who—they take the state test that would count 15 percent, still may give a test on that final week, but it goes into their 85 percent, not the 15 percent. So we would not—we would—if it's a—if it's a—I think what we're saying here is if it's a state-tested EOC, we would not—we would be saying the final score from the teacher's grade would now count 100 percent, not 85 percent. So we wouldn't be making it up with a new EOC that counts 15 percent that was teacher-generated if it's a state-tested area. But we do, to muddy the water more, have tests that aren't state-tested that we do have EOCs that count 15 percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mr. McMillan?
Just one quick question, and I guess I'm going to ask Dr. Ryswick, because I—I—I think you probably would come the nearest to being able to answer this. In regard to the—the four areas of the state test with EOC, it's given on a particular day, and the—the way it used to be, if—if a student was not at school or missed that, then it was up to the individual teacher to make a teacher-generated test and give it to that student at some point before school was out, grade it, and that counted as their—whatever their percentage. Is that still the policy across the county, or—or not?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Where where the change is now, is there's a lot more flexibility within testing, and you're correct. It used to be there were designated days that were kind of stop-dropping test, if we're going to say that, and now there's actually three-week windows that are given to districts, and schools have autonomy to be able to move within that three-week window and set their testing schedule as they see fit. And because of that, there's a lot more makeup time, so you have a three-week window as opposed to a given day or given couple of days for that. So makeups aren't as big an issue as they were probably back when we were in the classroom.
What I'm—what I'm asking, though, and I appreciate your answer, but—but what I'm saying is, if the science test is given on May the 10th, just for argument's sake, it—it—it's—it's given all across Knox County, it's—it's just a—like a one-day test, is it not? They can pick—they—they can pick—
Right.
Some schools may be doing it within Knox County on any time within that three-three.
Correct, and—and some of the tests now actually have multiple parts to those, so there may be part of an English test given on a certain day, or part of a math test on a certain day, and part B might be given on-on another—another day within that three-week window, so—
Okay, so—
Schools have autonomy for that.
It's no longer like—like a 90-minute test, correct, what it used to be. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we got three lights on now. Okay, go to Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Wait a minute, and then Mr. Norman, and then Ms. Dethridge, and hopefully that wins the discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Roundtree.
And I'll be brief. I think just hearing some of the concerns, I'm also amenable to if we want to say, you know—I can amend my motion to say it would only count for 5 percent or 7 percent. I mean, because I do hear—I do hear some of the concerns, but also, I just appreciate Ms. Coons' point that, you know, if the test itself is essentially, you know, unfair, I think that, you know, we could talk about this all night to come up with a—a perfect what—what is going to be equitable and fair, and I think it's unfortunate that we, you know, have spent so much money on these testing platforms to have situations like what Ms. Owen shared, and that we have kids that have worked hard and submitted work, and I appreciate Mr. Rutter saying that they think maybe everything's been retrieved, but I could also caveat emptor, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got an idea. Leave it up to the teacher. Let them make the decision solely, however they think is best. Leave it up to the teacher. That's what I'm in favor—the closest, whatever version of this we come up with, the one that leaves the most responsibility to the classroom teachers, is what I'm in favor.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge.
Even though I—I hear Mr. Norman, I think it should be—if you're going to do it at the school level, because every teacher would be—it would be a chaotic mess, because some would, some wouldn't, some would take 5 percent, some take 10 percent. It—it needs to be consistent, whatever it is. And I guess my question—we're talking about high school, those that took pencil and paper, are they going to count? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out—right now, I'm talking—the—I'm just trying to figure out. Right now, I'm talking to principals, and they're saying, "How far back?" We have no data for two or three years. And so they are really struggling with what they need to use as a baseline. What are we using as a baseline? What are we comparing what they do in performing now to what data, how far back? I know we've had problems, but I just want to know, if paper and pencil work this time, or we're not counting anything? That's just my question.
Well, I think this is only high school that's on—the motion that's on the floor, and there was no paper and pencil used in the high schools.
That's what I'm—okay, I'm sorry. Then when we get through with this motion, then I want somebody to answer that question for me.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Fugit, did you want to speak before we have the motion restated?
Well, I was going to ask Ms. Roundtree, did she intend to restate it, or I would be willing to offer an amendment?
Well, we have a—
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Deppert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make some clarifying statements for the board's information as well. Although the Tennessee State Board of Education has been extremely confusing with regard to their—their policy, because some of the confusion Monday night, as Dr. Ryswick and I found out, was that even though they did amend their policy in April, their amended policy still states that it was revised in January, so, however that works. But so—but the amended policy does say, and what—and what this board is—is talking about right now, is end-of-course examinations administered or or done through the state. So that would include the three levels of English, two levels of algebra, geometry, three levels of integrated math, US history, Biology 1, and chemistry. So those are the only ones that are—that are done through the state. So—so with regard to those courses, what what the State Board of Education has said is that it's up to the LEA, so this—so this board, to put a range of 0 to 15 percent for this school year, 17-18. Thank you.
Well, I was hoping—I was hoping you could just take care of it all, wipe it away. Okay, Ms. Fugit, do you want me to have Ms. Cottney read the motion first, and before you do anything, or do you want to speak to it?
I—I'd like to speak to amending Ms. Roundtree's motion to say that the maximum it could count would be 5 percent, to the good. I mean—
I accept your amendment.
Okay, so we have an amendment made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree.
No.
I'm sorry.
She accepted mine.
She accepted your amendment, yes, okay.
Can we let Ms. Cottney read?
Yeah, reread it.
Go ahead, Ms. Cottney.
And Ms. Roundtree's motion was that unless the high school end-of-course exam will benefit a student's grade, it would count 0 percent towards a final grade. If it will benefit a student's grade, it will count 15 percent.
And I offered an amendment to make that not count more than 5 percent, and I believe Ms. Roundtree accepted my amendment.
Yes.
So we will be voting—
No, I just want to make sure I understand. So we're still saying, if it doesn't benefit the student—
It's zero.
It's zero. If it benefits them, it's 5 percent.
Yes. And we either have to vote for 5 percent, and if it fails, then we go back to her original motion of 15.
So is it—so is everybody clear? The end—okay. So, what? Yes, we're voting on the amendment, yes. So it would count 0 or 5 percent if it benefits the student. So, okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. So we have to vote on the original motion. Okay, do you want to state that?
So the original motion becomes that unless a high school end-of-course exam will benefit a student's grade, it will count 0 percent towards a final grade. If it will benefit a student's grade, it will count 5 percent.
Okay, so, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. We're now ready for—
I think we're ready for public forum, Madam Chair.
Public forum, that's right.
All right, our first public forum speaker is Kirsten Cisco.
And my girls just went to the bathroom, so they'll be right back.
Oh, that's okay. You have five minutes, Cisco.
Okay. Uh-oh, wait a minute. Go back. Hello, my name is Kirsten Cisco, and I live in Knox County. So thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today, Madam Chair, Board, Superintendent, and all you people, everyone. I'm so glad to be here. Thank you for your service to the public good. I am coming—oh, well, I'll tell you why I'm here. I'm here to talk about elementary school. So this is my—I'm coming up on my 20th year as librarian at Bluegrass Elementary School, and it has been my great pleasure to teach there for all that time. I live very near the school, it is in my neighborhood, it's my community, it's my little corner of the universe. My own three children went through it, along with hundreds of other kids, and we have been in continuous operation since 1938, which is so cool. Over the course of my 20 years, I have seen so many changes, as have most of us. Some of the changes have been so great, and some have been good, and some have been disheartening. So I would love to talk to all of you about the great ones, like the advent of the internet and online databases, but I would like to do that another time, because today, I need to talk about the most disturbing change that I've seen in elementary school. Today, there is too much curriculum in elementary school. In all the subjects, it may look really good on paper, but it is not appropriate for elementary school-aged children. In scope, or often the level, there is too much to teach, there is too much to authentically learn. It is creating this school climate that is so hurried and rushed, and our schedule—we are scheduled to the minute, and it is inflexible. When is there time to develop the relationships that we've all been talking about, that we absolutely know make a total difference in educating a child? And with all the changes that have come down the pike, there are two things that have not changed. How many minutes are in the day? And the way the human being develops, the bodies, the brains. At Bluegrass, we are down to 20 minutes of recess a day, and that includes travel time. So it's 12 to 14 minutes for a kid to physically exercise during the day. There's not one adult or kid in this room who thinks that's what's best for children. So why are we doing that? We are doing that because the state has created too much curriculum under the guise of rigor. But rigor is not just more, more, more. Rigor is digging deep, rigor is learning something thoroughly. When you have too much to teach and not enough time, you just skim through it and you keep moving. Too much curriculum actually prevents genuine learning, it does the opposite of what we want. People shut down when they get over— People shut down when they get overwhelmed, they give up, they don't care. And that's what I've observed in raising my own three children and in teaching over 2,000 children in all my 20 years. And this is what I hear from my colleagues in all the other schools, too. I know that the State Department mandates the curriculum and suggests how many minutes to spend on each subject. But I want Knox County schools, all of us, everybody together, to figure out how to untie our hands and stand up for what we know is right. We are the adults. And we have to do something, because this cannot continue. It is truly setting everybody up for failure, and it's turning elementary school into a pressure cooker. The second five years of life, the second five years of life, are the time to cement manners and behaviors, to develop interests and habits, to create strong minds and bodies. And we need to focus on these five things. Making sure students are happy, healthy, curious, confident, and kind. And before we inundate them with too much, too many academics. If kids have these strong attributes, they can learn anything and everything. And what's more, they will want to. It is called elementary school. So thank you for listening. And I have, I have some papers for you that I would like to give you after my people speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Madeline Council.
Hello. Hello, my name is Madeline Council, and I live in Knox County. I go to Bluegrass Elementary. I am nine years old. I'm here to read you the Tennessee 4th grade Social Studies curriculum. I'll be in 4th grade next year, but this curriculum will start in years 2019 and 2020. At my school, social studies shares a time slot with science. It is about 45 minutes a day. Usually, if science lesson one day, and social studies lesson's the next. So the social studies curriculum that I and my schoolmates are about to read for you is really for one half of the year. Oh, and sometimes, we have field trips, or spelling bees, or flu days, or the Knox County Track Meets, or the 2nd grade play to go see. So we miss time, we miss class time for that stuff, too, because it is elementary school. And before I start reading the social studies curriculum, I want to tell you that my math teacher, Ms. Ellis, who is such a good teacher, couldn't finish all the things we were supposed to learn. So I couldn't answer two of the questions on TCAT. Also, the social studies curriculum that I will have next year has 68 standards, instead of the reverse standards I am about to start with, which has 41 standards.
Go, go, go.
Identify, number one, the War for Independence, 1700s and 1780s. Number one, identify and analyze the impact of conflicts between colonists and American Indian nations brought by the instruct...
Intrusion.
Intrusions of colons...
Colonization.
Colonizations. Number two, describe the contributions of Bren Franklin during this area... Era, including the development of the Albany Plain of Union and the join-or-die pollution cartoon. Number three, analyze the causes and consequences of the French and Indian War, and recognize Fort Loudon's role in it. Number four, evaluate how political, religious, and economic ideas and interests brought about the American Revolution, including resistance to imperial policies, proclamation of 1763, the Stamp Act 1765, the Townshend Acts 1767, Tea Act 1773, taxation without reputation, repugmentation, and...
Intolerable?
Intolerable...
Coercive?
...slash conversive act...
Converse.
...coversed act 1774, and the role of Patrick Henry. Number five, explain the different forms of protests colonists used to promote changes in British police policies, including the Boston Tea Party, tarring and feathering, letter writing, and boycotts. Number six, determine the historic and present-day significance of Declaration of Independence, including the roles of Thomas Jefferson and John Hancock. Number seven, contrast how the principles set forth in the Declaration of Independence clash with treatment of different groups, including women slaves and American Indians. Number eight, determine the importance of the following groups to American Revolution. Loyalists, Tories, Minutemen, Patriots, redcoats, son of liberties. Number nine, examine major events and battles of the Revolution, American Revolution, including Midnight Ride of Paul Revere, Battles of Le... Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Our next speaker is Nitin...
Deshpande.
Deshpande.
Hello, my name is Nitin Deshpande, and I live in Knox County. I'm a rising 5th grader at Bluegrass Elementary School. I am 10 years old. Our district reading department is teaching Knox County teachers the latest brain research. They say that a kid needs to hear a word somewhere between 10 and 17 times before they really get it. And struggling students need to hear the words close to 100 times. Please keep that in mind when you hear all the high-level terms in this 4th grade Social Studies curriculum. I will continue where Madeline left off. Battles of Lexington and Concord, Battle of Bunker, Breeds Hill, Battle of Saratoga, Valley Forge, Battle of Yorktown. Number 10, evaluate the contributions made by women during the American Revolution, including Abigail Adams, Mary Lydrew Hayes, Molly Pitcher, Betsy Ross, Phyllis Wheatley. Creating a new government, 1781 to 1789. 11, identify the weaknesses of the Articles of Confederation, including no power to tax, weak central government, and the impact of Shay's Rebellion. 12, identify the roles of James Madison and George Washington during the Constitutional Convention, and analyze the major issues debated, including distribution of power between the states and federal government, Great Compromise, slavery, and the 3/5th Compromise. 13, describe the conflict between the Federalists and Anti-Federalists over ratification of the Constitution, including the need for a Bill of Rights. 14, describe the principles embedded in the Constitution, including purposes of government listed in the preamble, separation of powers, branches of government, checks and balances, recognition and protection of individual rights in the First Amendment. Building the New Nation, 1790 to 1830. 15, examine the legacy and significance of the presidency of George Washington, including the creation of the cabinet member positions, two-party split, and the push for a strong central government. 16, map the exploration of the Louisiana Territory, and describe the events, struggles, and successes of the purchase, including the significance of Meriwether Lewis, William Clark, and Sacagawea. 17, identify major causes, events, and key people of the War of 1812, including trade restrictions, imprisonment, Battle of New Orleans, burning of Washington DC, Francis Scott Key, Andrew Jackson. 18, analyze the impact of Andrew Jackson's presidency, including the Indian Removal Act, Trail of Treas, and the preservation of the Union. 19, contrast regional differences in the early 19th century, including the emerging urbanization in the North, the expansion of the plantation system in the South, and the developing West. 20, analyze the impact of the American Industrial Revolution, including the significance of water mills, influence of geography, Robert Fulton's steamboats, Samuel Slater's factory system, and Eli Whitney cotton gin. 21, compare and contrast the characteristics of slave life in plantation cities and other farms. 22, describe the experiences of settlers on the overland trails to the West, including the purpose of the journeys and influence of geography. 23, examine the impact of President James K. Polk's view manifest destiny on westward expansion. 24, explain the significance of the California Gold Rush and westward expansion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nitin. And our next speaker will be Campbell Boni.
Hello, my name is Campbell Boni, and I live in Knox County. I have almost finished 5th grade at Bluegrass Elementary School. I am 11 years old. The State Department says that this curriculum is challenging, but age-appropriate, attainable for teachers and students, but Ms. Cisco doesn't think so. Ms. Cisco wanted me to tell you that only one of the 10 members appointed by the governor to revise these standards has any elementary school teaching experience. Only one out of 10. I will continue with the 4th grade Tennessee State Social Studies curriculum. Think about being nine years old. And again, all these standards are supposed to be taught in one half of one year. 25, analyze the sectional differences between the North and the antebellum South, including economic, political, population, social, transportation. 26, identify abolitionist leaders and their approaches to ending slavery, including Frederick Douglass, William Lloyd Garrison, Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman. 27, explain how slavery became a national issue during the mid-19th century, including the significance of Missouri Compromise, Compromise of 1850, Uncle Tom's Cabin, Kansas-Nebraska Act, Dred Scott versus... Sanford Decision, John Brown's raid on Harpers Ferry. 28, compare and contrast the various sectional stances on states' rights and slavery represented by the presidential candidates in the election of 1860, including Abraham Lincoln and Stephen A. Douglas. 29, evaluate the significance of the Battle of Fort Sumter and the impact it had on secession. 30, explain the efforts of both the Union and the Confederacy to secure the border states for their causes. Explain... 31, explain how the Unions and Aconda Plan used geographic features to isolate and defeat regions of the South and the Confederacy as a whole. 32, describe the roles of major leaders during the Civil War, including Jefferson Davis, Ulysses S. Grant, Robert E. Lee, and President Abraham Lincoln. 33, evaluate the significant contributions made by women during the Civil War, including Clara Barton and Dorothea Dix. 34, examine the significance and outcomes of key battles and events of the Civil War, including First Battle of Bull Run, Battle of Shiloh, Battle of Gettysburg, and Battle of Antietam. 35, explain the purpose of the Emancipation Proclamation and identify its impact on the country. 36, describe the significance of the Gettysburg Address. 37, describe the physical, social, political, and economic consequences of the Civil War on the southern US after the surrender of Appomattox Courthouse. 38, describe the impact President Abraham Lincoln's assassination had on the nation. 39, identify the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments as efforts to help former slaves begin a new life. 40, compare and contrast the Reconstruction plans of Abraham Lincoln, President Andrew Johnson, and Congress. 41, examine the significance of the Compromise of 1877 on the US. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronnie Chandler.
Ronnie Chandler, Knox County. Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Thomas, and your staff, Ms. Cottney, and Mr. Doppler. Thank you for the opportunity to continue our partnership to help our school system continue to bring more hope and opportunities to our students and families in our urban public schools. We love and respect them, and look forward to continuing to serve them. We are excited about not only continuing the direct services and daily relationships of support that address barriers and crises, but also excited to pilot and implement new opportunities as well, such as grad summer institutes that will begin May 30th at Pellicippi State. TCAT Knoxville and UTK Institute students will move into dorms the following Sunday. While this is the 17th institute summer, each year, there's a new institute theme for each. Grad Hands-on the Future paid summer internships begin this year at the end of May. New STEM-related exposure opportunities in the new school year will include behind-the-scenes industry visits, and expand career and college fairs, and provide extended opportunities for the AE and Fulton Community Schools assisted by grad. We support the vision of Principal Langlois to develop the AE Maker space already in development, and will leverage our network and connections with youth-serving partners and others to direct support his way. We also have plans to increase pathways of support for students who are from refugee and migrant families. Thank you also to the entire community that has stood in support of children from every corner of the city, and county, and state, from every walk of life, every income level, grassroots to CEO, every age, race, and ethnicity, public and private, students, and parents, and grandparents, and teachers, and principals, grad staff and board, great schools partnership, grad scholar-alumni who stood for themselves, media of every type who informed the community. What a beautiful and powerful message of support to young people in our inner-city public schools. They will continue to need this heightened level of support from all of us. It still takes a village. There is much yet to do to help these brilliant young people reach the milestones of high school graduation and post-secondary enrollment and completion. We are blessed and honored to continue this important work to help them get there. And thank you for all the time you have invested. And thank you for all the time you have invested in them.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.